A limb that fell.
Okay.
Basically perpendicular to the road behind the tree.
Mm-hmm.
On to this gentleman's property.
Tim, it's on private property?
It is.
Where y'all, where the county out there at the time that we declared us, I guess, county emergency?
I can't answer that. I don't know when the-
But it's clearly on private property?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This has been going on a while, Supervisor Stein, and yeah, they went out there, this is, the ice storms were brought the limbs down. They went out there, they've been out this, at least twice, I think, or three times, they've been out there, and it's some personality situations, I think, got conflicted for some reason.
Is it affecting the road ditch or anything that limbs, that's on, it's not affecting road ditch or anything?
No, sir.
Okay.
Isn't it just the result of an act of God and it's on his piece of property, so he needs to clean it up? I mean, if it's not in our street, we wouldn't, I mean, we'd clean it up if it was covering the street, but it's an act of God, right? It fell in his yard.
Well, and like Mike said, I mean, it's a judgment.
An emergency, declared emergency, and we're authorized as a county to clean up debris on private property that-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Is a result of an emergency. The issue is that the emergency's over.
Yeah.
Now, can we do it now?
Oh, you say over?
We could call the audit department and get a quick answer, and if you want to, but it's me. Is it, is it, is it bigger than you can do it, is it bigger than you can do?
Well, no, I can't do it, you know, I can hide somebody, I don't have no money to hide nobody, but they was out there, you know, at the time when it went on, you know, they ain't just come out there, they picked this up, you know, right after the, I think about a couple weeks ago after the time.
Right after the emergency was over.
Mr. President, I think the emergency's over, Wes, and we just need to move on. I mean, unfortunately, it happened that way.
Mm-hmm. I mean, that's all. Okay. Well, there were two issues that you had.
Mm-hmm.
And issue one would be the tree, or the tree limb that, that, that needs to be picked up, and the board speaks through its minutes, so I need to see if we can get a motion to send the road department back out there to pick up the tree. And I'll make that motion for you, Pavi, to, for the road department to go back out and finish the emergency cleanup that they fell short on. That's my motion. Can I get a second? Okay. Well, look, you're gonna have to get that up yourself. If I for lack of a second. Now, what's the other issue? You had some more pictures, some of them showing?
That was right in the same area. They got some standing water, well, it's standing in the road every time it rain. So, some of the pictures I got now, it's got the water, you know, still standing there after, you know, just like the rain, you know, certain time. But then, what it is, it is, it's just making the ditch deeper and deeper there, so that's then Supervisor here could he come out and try to maybe put some rocks in there trying to stop it coming, say from, from the ground up, it's getting this deep and getting bigger in the ditch. And so, you got a picture to see the standing water and all that in there. So, it drained, it got both ways coming in, and it come over on that side, on my side, but I know the water gotta drain somewhere, so I ain't got no problem that it drained through my property, so I don't have no problem, problem with that. All I wanna do is stop the ditch from getting deeper and deeper and deeper.
Okay, that's, that's a cross drain right there, I saw that. And Tim, if you could go out and take a look and see, maybe if we could put something, some riff ramp right there where the water does come through, it would, won't continue to cause the erosion right there? Okay. Okay, then, and Mr. Jones, I appreciate you coming in. I'm sorry about the, the tree, but the board has spoken.
All right.
Okay. All right, then.
Yeah, man.
Mr. President, next on the list is Joe and Emma Williamson.
Joe and Emma Williamson, okay. Can-
Come on up, Ms. Williamson.
Come on up, Ms. Williamson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Emma Williamson, 145 Harper Road, Camden, Mississippi 390045. We were here January of last year.
Harper, with H, Harper.
H-A-R-P-E-R. We were here in January of last year. We was asking for revitalized of an old road that had been turned into a private drive. And my husband and I, we are senior citizens, and we have a foster son, Aaron, and he's special need, and we can't get, we, we just got a bus to come pick him up, take him to school. And before then, we, I was taking him to Old Town, one hour's drive one way. Coming back home, staying home an hour and a half, taking him back, going back to pick him up at 12 o'clock. I did that for a couple of weeks. But what we are wanting to know, if there is any way that you all would consider taking, revitalizing Harper Road, taken from a private drive, it was once a public county road, if you would find it in your heart to consider turning it back into a county road so that it could get fixed, so that a bus could come, come up there to pick my son up for school, because as it stands now, he has to ride the bus in a wheelchair stroller. And he has grown, he's 14 now, his stroller will not fit in a car. We have to put it on the back of the truck. And when it rains, he can't go to school, because that stroller will get wet, just getting from the house to the road. And, you know, Madison County, I've only lived here almost a year. I lived in Rankin, I lived in Leek. I've never had this kind of problem until I came to Madison County. They don't care. I was told that Madison cared about their special children, but I've learned since I've been here, they don't. It's always, you gotta do, you gotta do. But actually, my husband and I, we just don't have the, we're not financially well off enough to build a road. It's a road, it's not a driveway. We considered a road to get to the house. And when it rains, honestly, we have to have the tractor to pull ourselves out, because we can't get there. We have to take him, if you see, he's pending knee surgery. We have to walk to get there. And we're just asking if you could find it in your hearts to just have a little compassion. I know, I know it's money, all of this stuff is involved, but just help us, we pay our taxes, yes, we're still paying taxes. And so, you know, we pay our taxes, we, we expect something back from there. But I also have a letter from the agency that I, I have him through, I got him from, and I have a letter that I wrote myself, pleading with the supervisors and everything about helping us out a little bit. And first, I would like to thank Mr. Griffin, the Fire Department, and the Sheriff's Department of Madison County during the ice storm. We were stuck back over there. They came, got us, put us up in a shelter, and we appreciate that to the highest, because it, we probably would've frozen just back over there in a total electric trailer, mobile home. But we just wanted to know that if you all was there, any way to find it in your heart to turn Harper Road back into a county road, and don't just keep saying, well, it's not, it was a county road at one time, why can't it be now? There's three houses on Harper Road. 109, actually, it's four addresses. 117, 123, and 124, and 145, that's on Harper Road. Three houses that is occupied on that road. And it's not a private, to me, it's not private. And it's back, well, North Madison County is back to me. But I would like to present these letters to the board.
Those letters are from who?
Uh, Ms. Newt, the Senator Director of Appella. Appella is the specialized foster care agency that I have my son from. And this is a letter that I wrote pleading with the board, asking you all to please reconsider what's been going on, please, because we're just not financially stable to get that, uh, to get that road done.
I'll make a motion to submit those two letters into the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, sir.
I'm glad to see y'all doing all right.
We're good.
What we're doing is saying it's not about money, because if, if it were about money, we would find some way and probably build that road. It's about state law that keep us from doing certain things on so-called private, property. I'm gonna probably make a motion for the engineer and road manager and our attorney to get with you and determine, is that portion of Harper Road still private, or is it public? And that's my motion.
All in favor of the motion? Aye. Okay, all opposed? Okay, we're gonna put together the engineer, road manager, and the attorney.
Attorney, yeah, because it is, Harper Road runs off of Williamson Road.
Okay.
And Williamson Road runs off a rocky hill.
Okay. Okay.
We, we gonna get your answer, whether it be the answer you want or not. We gonna get you the legal answer.
We would appreciate whatever you do, and like I said, thank you all for what was done back during the ice storm. We really appreciated that.
No problem. I thank, you thank the right people. That was the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department.
Well, Supervisor was there too, and I thank you, all of you all, I really do.
All right.
Because it was, it was nice, it really was. It helped us tremendously, and we're working on getting an alternative heat.
You make sure you have a heat, alternative heat for next winter.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. I would think, I think so. I think so. No, I don't think so. All right. Mr. Vane, is that all the concerned citizens? Did that be all concerned citizens?
All right, sir, that is all that has registered for the agenda.
Okay, so then we would move down to the public hearing? We ready for the public hearing? All right.
Good evening. How's everybody doing this evening?
Good evening.
We, I've got two public hearings on the agenda tonight. The first involves the Sonia Burris life estate, and it's, it's multiple years, and it involves multiple parcels, 2019 and 2020, and proper notices have been mailed. And then, the second is Willie True Love, and that's parcel 72D, 19A, 14 slash 56, and that pertains to tax year 2020. So, I guess we need to go into-
Public hearing.
Public hearing and ask if anyone is here to speak on, on these, to come forward.
Okay, so we have motion, and second by Supervisor Griffin, go into the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now in public hearing.
So, we just need to know if anyone's here to speak before the board on, on these matters.
Okay. Is there anyone here inside or out for the public hearing on those two tax matters? I don't think so. Okay, so there's no one here to speak?
Motion to go to the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing's closed.
Motion to go along with the tax assessment recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent items?
Motion to approve consent item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Supervisor Stein has a letter to the Commissioner of Insurance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mine's gonna be real short. I would ask the board to, for us to send a letter to the Commissioner of Insurance, Mr. Chaney, and ask for help for the fire, for a fire truck for our mega site. And so, that is, that is in form of a motion. Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Wait, can we ask for a ladder truck?
Uh, yes, I think in that motion that it will be a ladder truck, and we'll probably ask for-
Okay, just wanna make sure we're getting a ladder truck.
Or maybe-
Wanted to make sure that the motion was specific toward a ladder truck, not just a truck. I agree with Supervisor Jones, so that let's do it specifically.
Well, I'm hoping that, that we will receive monies, and then we can put that monies towards any truck that we choose, whether it's a ladder truck, but we will specifically have that in the, in the latter, in the letter.
Thank you.
And for, for the President of the Board to sign.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay. Next would be the, Mr. Johnson from Fisher Brown and Bockel.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. President, Supervisors, I'm here before you today to seek approval for the property and casualty insurance renewal for Madison County Board of Supervisors. Currently, your coverage is with the Massett Insurance Trust, and that is what is being offered today. Based off the proposal that was provided to you for your agenda packets, this year's renewal, or this proposal, consists of some increases in exposures, about a million dollars more in property values, also about, you know, five more vehicles from last year to this year, as well as an increase in auto physical damage. And that's based off of what's on this proposal. In reference to your coverages, deductibles are the same, $10,000 property deductible. From an insurance market standpoint, you know, holistically, the market has been somewhat tough. If you can imagine, the state of Mississippi in 2019 probably had a record year of tornadoes. Last year, everybody's familiar with the floods that took place. So, to have that, that low deductible is really a, a good thing. Also, I want to talk about this year's current loss results. I've looked at the loss results for the past six years, and to this point, to '20 and '21, this has been the lowest total incurred loss result that, that's been on file. It's about 32% right now. So, that's a testament with work with Mr., Mr. Shelton Vance and his consistent, you know, input on safety and making Madison County Board Supervisors a, a safe work environment. Throughout the year, we also, you know, provided some online safety resources for his disposal and other things, so it's been really a joy to work with him in that capacity. So, with that being said, I want to be brief. Is there any questions, concerns, and if not, seek approval?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
That's what I like.
I like, short and sweet. Okay.
That you let it live on so long earlier.
Well, you know, people have to, I mean, they're taxpaying citizens. They, they have to vent, let them vent, yeah. Okay. Tim, Brian, I kind of injured me.
The first item I've got for you is a request to modify the 2021 road plan to add Abernathy Road, Mississippi Street, Republic Street, La Salle Street, Old Trace Road, Azalea Street, and Mallard Point Circle.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Next item is, we received bids on Friday for the, or Thursday, for the countywide roadway resurfacing project. We got a really good bid, or we got several really good bids. Lowest bid was with AdCamp Inc. for $1,883,649.50. So, I ask that you award that contract and allow the Board President to sign the contract when it's returned.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion, or for question, that is. Tim, and these are great bids, you're exactly right, but do you have the number, and you may not have it today, but the number, if we, if we used our current contract, what the difference would be?
I know, but I can find out really quickly, but I, but on the low bid, every unit price was lower than our term bid.
Was it? Okay, that's great, because that's the reason that we sent this out.
Right.
Is hopefully we come back in like this.
Over $3 a ton on asphalt.
Wait, okay, good deal. Thank you.
Well, that's good. And how many tons of asphalt was that?
Ooh, let me see. Oh, man, this is gonna be small, so.
You can't see it.
16,200 tons. Well, plus another thousand of leveling, so 17,000.
Let me say $3, over $3.
Right. On that, those two line items, plus every other line item on there.
Well, that's great. Okay, next.
Uh, yes, question, Tim.
Haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted yet.
That's right.
Yeah, on this here, if we approve this, is there a time limit?
Yes, there's a, it's got a contract period. I believe it's 150 days, but I'm told that contractor wants to get started as soon as possible.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we want, soon as possible and complete, soon as possible.
Mm-hmm, right.
All right.
Okay, all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
All right, next item I have is task order number three under the General Services Agreement with StanTech Inc. This is for doing a overall, her preliminary design for the intersection of Stribling and 463, and also to provide a cost estimate. As we know, there's a school coming in there, and we've got issues there, so they're gonna help us out with what it's gonna, what it would look like and what it's gonna cost.
Motion.
Um, I'll second that. We've already got one school there, correct?
Right.
I'm getting ready to build another one in the traffic. Pictures I've seen have started backing up from the school in 463 all the way down Stribling to almost Camden Lake.
Sometimes.
Okay. All right, well, I'll second that.
Okay, I have one question. The, this is to actually do what? To, to design or to study?
This will give us a preliminary layout based on a traffic study that was done for the school district out there. So, it'll tell, it'll give us the turn lanes and the turn lane leaks that we need, and also a cost estimate on what it would cost to upgrade this intersection.
Okay.
No, I, I do wanna make one thing clear. I hope that, well, we're gonna have to find, the state's gonna have to help the school board, you know, we're gonna have other sources of, we can't just go at this alone, I hope that everybody-
Totally agree with you, and I think that's-
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Um, that we need to find other sources of, of revenue to help fund this project. The state or, or the school board's gonna have to help. The county can't just go at it alone. I think this could, you know, easily be a million and a half, $2 million project.
I think basically what all this is, just bringing the recommendation back.
Right, recommendation and also cost estimate, so that we can go do that next step of securing funding.
How much is that gonna cost us to bring this recommendation back?
$15,000.
$15,000? Okay, okay. All right. Okay, then, so that's all we're gonna do. We're gonna bring, we're gonna get a cost, and then we're gonna go in and try to see if we can get MDOT and the school board and everybody that's being affected by this to have some pitch in.
Right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
All right, last time I have is a cost, right, task order number 27 under the General Services Agreement with Mendrop Engineering for fee not to exceed $34,868 for CE and I services for the Way Road and Banks Road project.
Long time coming. Make that motion approve.
Okay, it's been motioned a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That's all I have, but the contracts for Way and Banks, Supervisor Griffin, are, are sitting with Cynthia, so we'll have them signed hopefully this week.
Okay.
Tim, before you, before you sit down, just an update real quick on the parking spaces at the south annex. I know the weather is-
Exactly. The weather's killed us. We're finally getting some dry weather. There's a piece of equipment out there now that's been dropped off, so we should be starting here soon.
Diddy time, then, depending on the weather.
Depending on the weather, exactly.
Hey, Tim?
Yes?
The, the conversation we had about Rogers Park and how we, we wanted to go ahead and finish up that, that parking lot. So, projects, I, we would like to see if we can get some of that money to go and, and finish that parking lot like it should be finished.
Okay.
I need to get with you on that. And the really erode, erosion that's about-
I've got that written down to look at tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay.
All right.
Okay, all right.
Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, first item I have, both of these are gonna be medical hardships, request place residences or mobile homes on, on property. First one is Eric and Marjorie Lenoir, request to construct residence, residence on property zone to SU1, is located at 249 Dave Brown Road. Property is zone to SU1 special use district. There's some of that reservoir property, back when the reservoir was constructed.
Ooh.
And this in Supervisor District 1.
That's mine. Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's been approved.
Uh, next item is Katrina Day. This request to place a mobile home on property zone to R1 residential, located at 1210 Highway 16 West. This is also a medical hardship, Supervisor District 5.
Okay.
Uh, is Katrina here?
Yes, she is.
You got anything to say, Katrina?
Ma'am.
Ms. Katrina, you need to go to the back room.
Back front, please.
Yes, I have a nephew who is disabled. I've had him 11 years, and he live with me, and I need to upgrade on my mobile home.
All right, sounds great. I'll make a motion to allow that upgrade.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you all.
The Board of Attorney?
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, I've got two issues, 47, 48. All right, I've got two issues, uh, 47, 48. 47 is just simply acknowledging the executive order by Governor Reeves regarding COVID guidelines and mask mandates and other, since our last meeting, the CDC issued new guidelines regarding quarantines for people who have gotten both COVID shots. So I'm not asking for discussion unless you want to enter into it, just acknowledge that both of those, uh, executive order and guidelines have been made, and acknowledge it because we have to update our handbook.
Make a motion to acknowledge?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, uh, 48, I could be quick doing this so we could discuss it.
Quick.
I thought so. All right, I'll give you the quick version. First of all, I'd like you to approve and pay an invoice to MEA, our drug testing company. Uh, the invoice is for $275. The bill came to us November 30th, 2020, is for administrative fee. As I understand it, uh, hadn't been paid yet because we found out, looking into all of this, that the contract with the MEA needs to be updated. You know, it was, uh, entered into in 2005, and it's just renewed, 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 and since 2005, the laws have changed, the statutes have changed, things, the drugs that you're tested for have changed, and, uh, we just didn't get this paid, but now it's, it's overdue. And, uh, so I'd like you to approve and pay the invoice to MEA for $275.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, uh, we have to discuss, and because the laws have changed, the drug profiles have changed, we need, we need to discuss this. Your administrator, your HR department, and your legal department have been working, uh, for the last couple of months to try to make, um, the drug policy more efficient and more conducive to the statutes, and we have recommendations before you. But in order for me to, um, to put this before you, I want to give you all the options. First of all, the Mississippi law and Mississippi statutes and the AG's opinion give you wide latitude over this drug, drug testing issue. The only thing you can't do is, uh, is violate federal policy. And federal policy only relates to Department of Transportation employees. Those employees that drive lost trucks and so forth, uh, under Department of Transportation policy, they have to be drug tested, uh, before they are employed, while they are employed, random testing, when they have an accident, and you can't mess with that. So, but I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about everybody else. So, uh, we're talking about non-DOT drug testing policy for employees in Madison County that are not hired by the elected officials. The elected officials are exempt from this. Everything that I'm about to discuss to you now, the elected officials are exempt from this. Uh, Sheriff's Department, you know, tax assessor, tax collector, except if they decide to do this, they have to abide by fed, uh, state law. So that's up to them, and, uh, so, but now we're talking about everybody else, all the other employees under your control that you hire. Now, uh, right now, we found out that Madison County has a drug testing policy for pre-employment and for random testing and when someone has an accident. So of course, it makes sense. Pre-employment, if, uh, if you don't want somebody that you hire, you know, that, uh, that has a drug situation, so we have a pre-employer requirement. If the employee doesn't, refuses to take the drug test, or if the drug test comes back positive, that's a condition for not hiring them or for monitoring them. All right? So you have that. You also have random drug testing. The problem in Madison County is that that has not been implemented fairly. Uh, there's something called, uh, neutral selection, and we found out in Madison County, the way it's been working over these many years is that you can have an employee sitting side by side with another employee in the same, uh, department, and one employee gets called for random drug testing and the other one does not, right? And it keeps happening, and we found out that's maybe because the other employee's name has ever been given to MEA. So, so MEA just by random calls people, but they gotta have their names.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we found out that was, uh, that was not fair. Uh, I'm not saying that anybody discriminated against anyone else, I'm saying that it wasn't fair. So what I'm telling you is that the Board of Supervisors has wide discretion. First of all, you could decide, we don't want a drug test policy. Pre-employment are random, and that's fine. That's up to you. You don't have to do it, you only have to do it with regard to Department of Transportation federal guidelines, state guidelines, both the statute and the AG's opinion says that's up to you. So that's the first option, don't do anything. The second option is that you might just want to keep it with pre-employer drug testing, you know? And don't do any random selection. That's up to you as well, and there are plenty of AG's opinions aside that that's fine. Now, if you want to continue doing what you're doing now, drug test your employees on a pre-employed basis and random selection, that's where the law comes in. We have new statutes of Mississippi that, that gives you guidelines as to which function of employees must be subject to random testing. And we sent you a memo, but I know you read it, but I'll just remind you.
Yeah, remind you.
All right, uh, those employees, well, uh, let me just back up. You could randomly test everybody. So you've got wide discretion, don't test anybody or test everybody. You can do it wider, you can do it narrow. What we thought you would want to do, uh, the HR department, the administration, and legal, is that you wanted it narrow. So we looked at the statute, and the best, most efficient way to do this, comply with the statute, is to narrow it just to the employees in Madison County that have access to sensitive information, the employees of Madison County that have activities affecting public health and safety, and, uh, you know, those that carry firearms. And that's pretty much the, the, um, the guidelines and the areas regarding the random selection, uh, that is, that is neutral selection for random testing. So we laid them out. So we felt that, looking at all the departments, again, this exempts sheriff and the rest of the elected officials, those in the administrative, all subject to random testing because they have access to sensitive information, and that's everybody in the administration, not just one or two, it's everybody. Building and grounds, no. Controll, yes, because the comptroller has access to sensitive information. Emergency management, yes. They carry firearms, they have access to sensitive information, and they have, they, they deal with activities affecting public health and safety. So yes. Fire services, of course. You know, they deal with activities affecting public safety. Jurisdictional Information Services, no. Human Resources, yes. They have access to sensitive information. Information Technology, yes, for the same reason. Planning and zoning, no. Purchasing, yes, access to sensitive information. Road Department, yes, public safety. Engineering, yes, public safety and justice court, yes, public safety and sensitive information. So what, what your HR administration and legal are recommending is that we continue with pre-employer drug testing, for obvious reasons. We, we continue with lawful random testing, but make it narrow for everyone within these departments with this particular function. And, uh, then, then if you agree to this, we will update our contract with MEA. In fact, we have to do that anyway. And then we will update our guidelines and update our handbook. So these are your options, and your recommendation is before you.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation.
Second.
I, I'd like for a discussion.
Sure.
Real quick. Mike, on the, on the recommendations that y'all did not recommend was buildings and grounds, and which others?
Building and grounds, no. Geographic information systems, no. Planning and zoning, no. We felt, we felt, you know, I mean, you could have included, we could have done that, but we just felt.
All right, timeout.
Yes.
Do they operate a county vehicle? Does any of those three operate a county vehicle?
Yeah, one of them do.
One of them.
Well, you should tell me.
I don't know, I'm asking. Y'all one made the recommendation.
Yeah, one of them.
Plant.
And, and here's, if they operate a county vehicle, I think they should be tested.
All right.
That's just, that's just my opinion now. They should be tested because that's, that's a county vehicle.
Okay. Well, you got that?
I mean, that's.
Are you one of all of them in, or just that one?
Well, every which one, I mean, run, I mean, operates a county vehicle or, or, yeah, or equipment.
Yeah. The building and ground, I think, is the one that held the, out of the group you just named.
Yeah, maybe. I, I'm not sure.
Building and ground definitely have, uh, a lot of.
Planning and zoning's got a vehicle.
Yeah. What was that truck?
Planning and zoning's got a vehicle, don't they?
Yeah, definitely what I was talking about, is the planning and zoning.
Which, which one has vehicle, Shelton? Out of those three that y'all left off?
Can, can I, can I have one second?
Yes.
Yeah. So he has a vehicle.
I hear you. Uh, the reason that those were left out is because when you go through the criteria in the statute, these were not, we did not interpret the statute to say that a vehicle driver was.
Right.
One of the categories that should be tested. However, as Mr. Espy.
It's not, it's not based on the function that I outlined. Sensitive information, health and safety, and firearms. It's not there. Now, if someone has an accident in a vehicle, right, and you think that the accident may have been caused by drugs, alcohol, you could always ask them to take a drug test, but just because you have a vehicle, we didn't do it. You can put it in if you like.
I would make a substitute motion to include buildings and ground and planning and zoning.
All right, I'll second it.
Aye.
And I vote for it.
All right. All in favor of the substitute motion to add the other people that they added? Joe, by saying, uh.
All right, and, uh, lastly, we'd like the motion for the updated contract with MEA, which is here to be signed by.
Motion.
The President.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty.
And the last, uh, Mike, this, are you finished with yours?
Yes.
This, on, on the ones, and I'm reading right below, uh, I guess item three, random testing that you sent, or that's on the agenda, it said the other elected officials, Chancellor Clerk, Circuit Clerk, Sheriff's Department, Tax Assessor, Tax Collector.
Yes.
We did not include those in our motion.
No.
Okay.
You did not include those.
And I'm reading here is that they must have a policy, or is, do they have an option?
They are exempt from this policy.
Correct.
As I said.
That's right.
Uh, they don't have to have a policy, but if they have a policy, it's gotta be according to state guidelines, which you have just decided.
Okay, they do not have to have a policy.
Nope.
Okay. That's all I needed. Thank you.
Okay. Shelton Vance.
Mr. President, Supervisors, please look at item number 49. This is a request from, uh, Senior Circuit Judge Ratcliffe, asking for your, um, agreement in paying a staff attorney's salary. This money is paid, the, the attorney is an employee of the state, this payroll will be paid by the state, but then we are billed for a portion, and you will see in the breakdown, um, there's a breakdown between Rankin and Madison County for this, uh, this salary.
I didn't see that breakdown. You must missed.
Uh, the breakdown is in the second page. It says it will be, um, the above salary shall be funded on a monthly basis, first from the funds remaining and the undersigned judge's state support funds, and then equally by Madison and Rankin's. It would be split between the two of us.
I see it. Oh, okay.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Item number 50, in the budget this year, we budgeted for park restrooms, and we need to hire, uh, an architect. Uh, I believe, um, I'm recommending that we, uh, choose Dale. Remember Dale was the one who did sulfur springs? Uh, if you want to choose another architect, uh, please let me know.
Motion to allow them to choose.
We'll get a contract from Dale and bring back to the next meeting if that's what you choose today.
That's my motion.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, Dale.
Item number 51, this is a letter of intent from the City of Ridgeland that they want to participate with us in a household hazardous waste day. This letter is required for an MDEQ grant.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Item number 52, we've had a uniform and boot policy for the road department for several years. Uh, we've kind of made some changes over the years. We now have a bridge and culvert department, uh, that's under engineering, as well as we have uniforms and boots being distributed to the buildings and grounds, so this is to update that policy and, and, uh, bring it up to date with the employees that we have in uniforms and boots.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Got it.
Shelton, just make sure, I'll say each employee get a copy of this.
They will. Actually, there's a place for them to sign it, uh, to indicate that they, uh, are aware of it. Item number 53, a memorandum of understanding. You may recall that you entered into an agreement with Wagner Engineering to provide a drainage study. They are looking for some information from Central Mississippi Planning and Development, and CMPDD has asked for this agreement between the three parties, us, CMPDD, and Wagner, before they release the information.
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Item number 54, each year, Waste Management provides an update for their prices. It's in the contract that we signed, uh, that they receive a CPI, Consumer Price Index Adjustment. This is the adjustment for the recycling bin and services at Lake Cavalier Fire Station.
All right.
Make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Well done. Our comptroller, the bean counter coming through the door. All right.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The first item I'd like you to consider is number 55, the approval of the budget amendments and the interfind cash transfers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The next items are 56 through 59, which consist of the general claims docket and the payroll dockets for March 1, March 3, and March 11.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Number 60, approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission, per per diem, for March 11.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And the last item is the approval of the Fleet Corps Claim Docket.
Second.
All in favor? All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Knock it out. Thank you. Okay, running live, do you have anything?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Okay, Randy, Sheriff Tucker.
Just one item, Mr. President, is back on the, uh, drug testing policy. First of all, I wanna thank Mike and Shelton for doing that. I think everybody ought to do it, not trying to bug the system, but I do, would like to say that the Sheriff's Department is gonna opt to present our own proposal and, and put that on the record with the clerk. I believe, uh, we have a pre-employment test, I don't believe, I know we do, I've got it here in front of me. Uh, we have a pre-employment, uh, drug test policy. We also have a policy of reasonable suspicion that every employee that we hire signs, uh, indicating that they will be subject and agree to provide a sample upon reasonable suspicion, which gives us a little bit more teeth than a random, uh, drug test. It does comply with state law. We've met with our attorneys. Uh, we do have one employee that is subject under the federal guidelines. I talked to Shelton about that this morning. Uh, he's with the US Marshal Service. Those guidelines are being met. I spoke with them today, uh, on that. Uh, but I'll give you a couple of examples. I think Supervisor Stein hit the nail on the head. If you're gonna drive a county vehicle, uh, if you have an accident, uh, you, you need to be drug tested, just like I was when I had one. Uh, I think it's, you know, incumbent upon us to do that. Uh, another example is just like an officer involved shooting we had on September fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, every officer out there that was involved in that, uh, that unfortunate situation, that fired a firearm, needed to be drug tested. You can't do that with a random test situation. It, we need to be able to subject them, uh, upon request, and I think our policy, uh, fits that perfectly in the law enforcement, not only sensitive information, but, uh, uh, in those kinds of situations. So we will be providing Cynthia with that copy, and, uh, you'll have it the next day or so, soon as Lee and Becky Cowan get finished with it. But, uh, I'd just like for you guys to acknowledge that we're gonna opt to, to go that route.
I'd make a motion to acknowledge with, uh, also maybe a copy into our minutes when you get it.
You'll have it probably tomorrow by lunch.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Okay, any old business? Any new business?
Mr. President, I have, uh, two new business. One is that I have appointment on Makita Board, and I would like to, um, I have a vacancy on the Makita Board, and I would like to appoint Wint McGee at one twenty-eight North Maple Street, Ridgeland, Mississippi. To that board?
All right, uh, that's an appointment.
To the Makita Board.
To the Makita Board, uh-
That's a large position.
No, sir.
Mm-mm.
District three.
District, that's the district. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And the other, uh, I say new business, on the drug policy, Shelton, if you would, I would ask that, uh, you contact the other elected officials and see if they have a drug policy. And, um, and if they do, ask them for a copy, we can just enter it into the minutes.
Okay, I, Mr. Espy, didn't you ask that question this week?
No, not all of them.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll ask.
Their, their policy must be, if they have one, if they wanna have one, it's gotta be commensurate with the state guidelines.
Uh, yeah, I, I think this board needs to know who has one and who hasn't as well. And if they do have one, ask them for it to where we can enter into the minutes, just like the sheriff did.
We'll, we'll ask for that this week.
Okay, thank you.
And of course, I think then if we're gonna get a copy of it, then we need alternative reviews to make sure that it does it here at the state guidelines.
That's right.
Okay, uh, is that any, any other new business? Good. Okay, get, get a motion, Joe, John.
Hold on, hold on. Executive session, executive session.
All in favor?
Executive session.
Executive session. We've got two, uh, an established just compensation and adjustment to a previous, uh, just compensation, and then your Makita Director has an economic development issue for you.
Really?
We're in that out. We can stay here.
Yeah, we wanna, we, we would like to stay here, so let's, yeah, get a motion for close termination.
Green state, right?
All in favor of close termination? All right. We're gonna stay in here, Twain. Jim, the reason I gotta stay late?